I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us tonight. This is the October 19th, 2020 zoning board of appeals meeting. Before we get started, I'd like to first take a roll call. Christine?
Here.
Is here. Art?
Here.
Phyllis? Phyllis?
She's there. She's not on. She's gonna unmute her and see if that works. There we go.
Phyllis?
I'm here.
All right.
I was muted.
My name is Tony Duquanti, and I am here. Our chair, Paul Leahy, is away this evening. And Larry, are you out there?
Yeah, I don't think.
I don't think Larry's with us tonight. Okay. We do have four members, which does constitute a quorum. So just to remind everybody that four votes are what is necessary for any measure to carry. So we'll take that into consideration as we move forward. Before we get started, I've been asked to read the following. Tonight's meeting has been convened in accordance with Governor's March 13th, 2020 Executive Order 32021, as extended, which suspends certain provisions of the open meetings law to allow a municipal board to convene a meeting via video conferencing. In accordance with the executive order, the public has been provided with the ability to view and participate in tonight's meeting by computer, smartphone, or telephone, and to view the meeting on the usual cable television channels. The recording of the meeting will be posted to the town website, and a written transcript of the meeting will be prepared and provided at a later date. There has been a roll call, and of the board members, there is a quorum present for this meeting. And I've also confirmed with the secretary that this meeting has been duly noticed. We have fulfilled our legal notice requirements by posting a copy of the notice of meeting on today, on the town's webpage and on the town's bulletin board. We have emailed a copy of the notice to the media, and we have confirmation that the legal notices for the public hearings have been properly published. The format for the meeting is, our procedure is this. The first part of the meeting is when our applicants are asked to come forward and present a brief description of their application. All testimony that's given before the board is sworn testimony. So you will be sworn in first before explaining your procedure. After that, that is done, then we'll go around, and the board will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant. When that is satisfied, then we will move to close the individual agenda items after all items have been heard. And by the way, we do take all items in the order that they're listed on the agenda. And do we have additional copies of the agenda on hand? There's a few up here if you wish to grab one. After all the, we've gone through the agenda, and everybody has presented their case, and we've closed the public hearings, then there will be no further deliberation from the, from the audience. Okay? At that point, the board will then deliberate on each item and vote on it. You are welcome to stay through the deliberation period of the meeting. If you don't choose to stay, you're more than welcome to leave, and you can check back with the town tomorrow morning to see the results of the, or the outcome of your application. Everybody okay with that? Okay. First, we have some old business on the agenda, and items number one and two, at the request of the applicants, have been adjourned to our November 9th meeting. Since these items are open items, we do, I do ask if there's anybody on the board that would like to second the adjournment of items number one, Vassar College, and two, Stewart's Shops, to November 9th.
I'll second both.
Okay. Art, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes? So that carries four zero on both of those items. Item number three, carport, that has been withdrawn by the applicant, so there's no need for further discussion there. Jumping ahead to item number 10 on the agenda, this item has been adjourned also to the November 9th meeting. There was an inaccuracy in the listing, I believe, in the application. So for clarity and to make sure that everything is being done properly, this site, this item has been adjourned to November 9th. And since this hasn't been opened, there is no need for second. We'll just see that applicant next month.
We're gonna renotice that one as well, because it was improperly noticed.
Right. Okay. Thank you. All righty. So the next item on the agenda is item number four, two-car garage, Charles Vedder, 26 Thomas Avenue. And this applicant seeking a variance from 21048 of the town code, which requires a setback of 10 feet from side and rear property line for accessory structures to permit a garage to be erected two feet from the side lot line. This would require a variance of eight feet. Is there somebody in the audience, Mr. Vedder? Would you like to come forward? If you would please have a seat that either one likes. And if you would be sworn in, please.
Mr. Vedder, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Would you like to bring us up to date on your application and fill us in here?
Actually, if you could move, if you could just move your microphone a little bit. Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
I'm looking to put a two-car garage. It's like a shed on my property, and I need the variance to go closer to the fence line because of where my driveway's situated and my fields from my step deck.
You're replacing an existing garage?
Yeah, there was a one bay there, but it's no longer there.
Okay. How close to the property line was the previous garage?
10 feet.
10 feet. So you want to extend an additional eight feet?
Right.
Okay. And there's no, there's no leeway? I'm looking at the, your rough drawings here, and they are rough. But there seems to be, I know you can't go further back with the garage. Looks like the fields are in back of the garage. But is there no room to move further to the, on your drawing, to the left?
No, because the, the one field goes out past and then cuts behind it. So in order to put two bays there, I have to go a little closer to the fence.
Okay.
I mean, I can go within three feet, would be fine. But.
I'm sorry, you could?
I say I can go three feet from the fence if I have to. But I want to leave a little, I said two feet because it'll give me a little room to, you know, situate it.
Okay. Questions from the board? Christine?
No questions.
Art, do we have, do you have anything from any of the neighbors that are concerned about this?
Well, there's no, no.
Hi. I don't know if you can hear me here or not. Brooke Youngworth from Corvilly Garland in Rambeau. I represent William Van Ornam, that is a neighbor at 24 Thomas Avenue. I don't think you can see me. Unfortunately, my camera doesn't seem to be working.
Okay. Well, can you hold one moment, please, so you can be sworn in?
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do. So Mr. Van, Van Ornam does not oppose the application per se, but he is looking to see if the board would require first that an actual architectural diagram for the garage is submitted. We have concerns that, we want to make sure that the water from the roof be properly directed towards the middle of Mr. Vedder's yard instead of near the corners of the garage, just because it is very close to my client's dry well, which already has some issues with being wet. So we don't oppose it, but we want to make sure that before the garage is put up that, you know, there's, architecturally, it's, it's been designed to not damage my, my client's property.
Where is her property?
Next door.
Next door, 24.
Next door.
Okay. So that's something we might be able to accommodate as a condition of approval, if we, you know, where, when it comes for the building permit, making sure that the water is directed away from the neighboring property line.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I didn't know the lady didn't live next door to me to.
This, that, this is, this is, this is the, this is the attorney representing the neighbor. So they, they're, they're here to speak to make sure that their client's best interests are being taken into consideration.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I understand.
Okay. So, so the concern is not as much if, Ms. Casson is not so much the placement of two feet from the property line, but more to, but more to make sure that the runoff water is not directed to create more of a problem for your client. Is that correct?
Yeah. Okay.
Ms. Casson? Hello? Brooke, Casson, you're muted. Did I understand that correctly? Did everybody?
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yep. Yes, I can hear you now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did I state that correctly? That is, that's the nature of your concern, is to make sure that the runoff is addressed properly, so it doesn't have an adverse effect on your client's property?
Yes, that's correct. And just so your record is clear, I know that my, my name says Casson. That's actually my, my old married name, so my, my last name is actually Youngworth. It's Y-O-U-N-G-W-I-R-T-H, just, just so that's clear.
Okay.
Lisa, were you able to get that name? Because it's a little hard for us to hear in here.
I, I.
Yeah.
I can't make it out.
Lisa, you got it? Okay. We just want to make sure our attorney got the name properly, so we can have it for the record. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. With that said, let's start again. Christine, do you have any questions for Mr. Vedder?
No questions.
Art?
I have two.
Okay.
The pitch of the roof. The roof is that gonna go toward your neighbor?
Ah, yes. I believe so, yeah.
So looking at the, or are you gonna have it go a long ways to the garage? Where's your B?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be towards the neighbor's yard and toward my yard.
So it's all the more important that you have a runoff.
So when I put the water things on, it'll go towards the back. And if I have to angle it so it goes to my yard, that's fine.
Okay. And you're saying you'd be willing to move it over a foot if we requested that?
Yeah.
You could do that with no major?
Yeah, that would be fine.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks.
I have no questions. That's it. Phyllis, do you have any questions? I'm sorry.
No, no, Tony, I'm good.
Okay.
He addressed the neighbor's concern, so.
Great. All righty.
See if there's anybody else who wanted to speak about this.
I'm sorry, yes. Is there anybody else in the audience, either present or on our Zoom call, that would like to speak to the, Mr. Ben, Mr. Vedder's issue at 26 Thomas Avenue? Okay. Not hearing anything else. Thank you, Mr. Vedder. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Do I get it, or?
Well, as I explained in the beginning, what we do is we go through the agenda. Now we hear everybody's application. When that's all over, then we will deliberate and vote on, on the outcome.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda, Billy Van Jura, 35 Hasbrook Drive. Is Mr. Van Jura present?
Hello.
Yep.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Mr. Van Jura, do you swear?
Oh, there he is. Okay.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Mr. Van Jura, would you like to describe your project to us?
We have an existing eight-by-eight size shed. We're in need of some more storage space, but we'd like to keep the shed located where the current one is. So we'll be moving the small shed and replacing it with a larger shed, but we'd like to keep the new larger shed within four feet of each fence line where the current shed is right now. So I'm gonna have a larger shed, but I'd like to maintain the four feet of distance between the existing property lines in the corner of my property.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address this application at 35 Hasbrook?
If you're on a phone, you can use star six to unmute yourself, or just on the Zoom call, there's a button at the bottom of your screen.
Mr. Van Jura, I do have one question before we start to go around the board. The existing shed is four feet from back inside lot lines presently. You're just looking to extend it larger, but into your property, not closer to the property lines?
That is correct. I'd like to maintain the same distance, except the new shed will extend only into my property.
Okay. So that the greater infringement would be on your property, not any closer to existing lines?
Correct, which is why we'd like to keep it to that four feet, so it infringes on the yard area, but at a minimal now.
Got you. Okay. Any questions on the board? Christine?
No questions.
No questions. Art? Nope.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Okay. And there's nobody in the audience that would like to speak to the application at 35 Hasbrook? Hearing none. Do I have a, here a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. That is, we're gonna move on to item number six. Item number six is an existing fence, Michael Lynch at 44 Eileen Boulevard. Is somebody to address that? Somebody come up and? Would you state your names for the record?
Yep. Kayla Wade.
Michael Lynch.
Do you both swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Please tell us about your application.
So, so we put in the application for a fence showing that it would be 30 feet back from the road, and it was approved. And then, here we are. It's not, it's not okay now. So now we need a variance of 18 feet.
We're, you indicated that the, the fence, as you have erected it, has, was previously or prior to erecting it, was approved?
Yes. We have the, the application, which says approved. And it says all the details that we are gonna do with the drawing.
And do you have copies of those for the board?
We have asked Sonia to give you a copy.
Okay. Has everybody seen the, the plan and the drawing and such?
Seen the existing fence.
Right. And seen the existing fence.
Yeah.
Okay. But does everybody, has everybody on the board have something to show that this, that this was, does everybody?
It says on the, it says on the agenda existing.
Okay.
So, Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
We're being told that this fence was approved prior to this meeting, as it stands?
Yes.
Yes. The permit to construct the fence was approved by my predecessor. And when it was time to do a final on the fence, it was, found out that the fence was not 30 feet from the property line.
And this plan was part of the original permit?
Yes.
Showing the fence?
Yes.
But the height is the problem as well?
Well, it's, uh.
Only because it's not 30 feet back from the property line.
And this is, we're, we're after the fact now?
Correct.
Okay. Just for kind of stuff?
Okay. See, it's why we have to look into these things very carefully to see exactly what's going on. Is there anything, is there anything else at this point that you would like to say about the application? Okay. Is there anybody in the audience or on our Zoom call that would like to address this? Okay. Christine, do you have any questions?
No. My only question was if they knew that, that it had to be back 30 feet to have a six-foot fence, but obviously you were.
I would have not built a six-foot fence in a spot where I knew I would have moved it, so.
Yeah, we, we were under the impression 30 feet back from the road, which is why we did exactly 30 feet back from the road and put that in the plan, that it's 30 feet back from the road, which was approved.
That's all. No questions.
Art?
Pardon me?
My concern here is that the height was approved as well, correct? Not just the 30?
Yes.
Because it, it should only be a three-and-a-half-foot fence, correct?
Well, it's two, it's, it's two front yards because it's a corner lot, and this extends on the side of the house.
Okay. I'm good. Thank you.
I can speak to that. I don't, can you all hear me?
Yes. Yes, please.
Okay. This is Lisa Cobb, the attorney, just for the record, for the recording. But if it is set back so that it's not within the front yard, then you don't, and even if it is technically in front of the structure, if it's not within the 30-foot setback, then you don't, you are allowed to put up a fence that's taller than three and a half feet. So it's either in front of the structure or 30 feet, whichever is the less restricted is the way the code section reads. So in this instance, they would have been allowed to put up the six-foot fence without needing a variance for the fence if it were properly located.
Okay.
But now, because it's not properly located, they need a variance both for fence and for height, for location and for height.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Phyllis, do you have any questions?
No. No questions.
Okay. I don't, I don't have any questions either. We visited the property and as, as all the board members did. I will, how, let me ask this. I gotta take a little straw poll here to give, to give the O'Connors a feel for options. Okay? Christine, how are you feeling about this at this point, understanding that they had documentation that gave them, I mean, are you, I just want to get a sense for how you might be leading at this point?
I think if, if it was approved and they went into it feeling, you know, knowing, thinking that it was approved at that height, at that setback, then if the neighbors don't have a problem.
Okay. Art?
Again, I think it was our failing, not the ones who are on.
Okay. Phyllis, how about yourself?
Well, I, you know, I went out there with you, and I think that they acted, the family acted in good faith, and I didn't feel that the fence's location obstructed any traffic or anything like that to, you know?
Okay.
So I'm, I'm comfortable with the variance.
I just, I just wanted to take a little straw poll, just to, to kind of give the O'Connors the option as to whether they might want to, you know, adjourn the item until next month. But how do you feel about that, from what you've heard from the board this evening and our discussions? Do you feel comfortable keeping this open and getting a decision this evening?
Yep.
Okay. Very good. And do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Phyllis? Oh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. I get a vote, too. Okay. This, this motion is closed. So thank you very much. Okay. Next on the agenda is Linda Sloot, 19 Oriole Drive.
No.
Is it not? I'm, I'm sorry. I apologize. I had muscle marks here. It's Kenneth Baldwin and Jeremy King, 42 Brentwood Drive. My apologies. Do we have somebody representing this application?
Down to the bottom.
There we go.
Item.
Here.
Oh, there you go. Okay.
Mr. Baldwin?
Mr. Baldwin, please be sworn in.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Okay. Mr. Baldwin, please give us a description of your project.
So we are building a fence. We basically live on a corner lot, and so one of the, where, we basically have two front yards, and so we're putting a fence to basically create a yard for our dog to run.
The property is a very unique property. Its topography is very unusual, and you also are in a situation, again, where we have two front yards. So that, that is part of the nature of what's, why we're here. I just want to make a note that the application says the fence of seven feet in height, but from our, from our visit yesterday, we were told that the fence would actually be a six-foot fence. So since you're not exceeding what we were looking for, but the fence is actually going to only be a six-foot fence. Christine, do you have any questions?
No questions.
And?
Art? You just covered my question. Six versus seven?
Yes. And I apologize, I don't have any questions. Phyllis?
No, I have no questions. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience or on our Zoom call that would like to address the issue at 42 Brentwood Drive?
Oh, may I? I'm actually the neighbor across the street.
Hey, John.
Hey, how you doing? Um.
Excuse me, excuse me. Sir, sir, sir.
Sir, excuse me, one moment.
Hello? Could you just be sworn in, please?
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Would you proceed?
Okay. That lot, actually, I'm looking at it right now. It's always been a little bit of an eyesore. It's always been full of shrubbery and brush, and it's never been maintained by any of the owners. So a fence actually might make it nicer.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. All right. Is there anybody else that would like to speak to this application? Item number seven on the agenda? Okay. Hearing none. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Moving on, item number eight. I'm sorry, let's see here. Yes, item number eight, Timothy J. O'Connor and Deborah O'Connor, 183 Fulton Street.
I'm here.
Are the O'Connors present?
Yep.
Okay, yes. Mr. O'Connor, would you be sworn in, please?
Mr. O'Connor, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Thank you. Okay, would you like to give us a brief description of your project?
Yeah, I'm looking to replace an old aluminum nine-by-seven shed with a bay horse twelve-by-sixteen shed on the back corner of my property. The drawing I gave you guys, it's a little bit off my driveway, actually, my, the entrance to my garage is on the backside of my house, not in the front. So the way my driveway sits, it doesn't leave a lot of free space to put a shed. And that's why I'm looking to put it closer to the fence line.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this application? Any questions from the board, Christine?
No questions.
Art?
No other place for it, as he plops in the middle of the driveway, so.
Phyllis? Phyllis, do you have any questions for Mr. O'Connor?
I don't know how to do a PDF. I don't, Anthony, thank you.
Thank you for the Anthony. And I have no further questions, thank you for providing such a good representation of the shed that you're gonna put there, that looks like it's gonna be a complement to the property and will help to eliminate some of the other issues that you have and allow you to make better use of the space, the space allowed. So thank you for your application and for your time.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Motion to move, to close this public hearing? So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So move. Moving right along. Didn't you not say aye, Phyllis?
She did.
Okay.
No, I did say aye.
Yeah, that's what we thought, okay. We got that delayed mute going on there. All right. Now we are up to Linda Sloot at 19 Oriole Drive. Thank you, Ms. Sloot, would you please be sworn in?
Ms. Sloot, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Okay, would you like to give us a brief description of your project, please?
Yeah, this is pretty simple. Out behind my house, I had an eight-by-twelve deck, which was all rotted and tore down. And now I want to put up a twelve-by-fourteen deck and it goes to the end of my house, which is thirteen point four feet from the property line.
And then, that's it, okay. My two, I just want to make clear, it's not going, the deck, the newly erected deck or the newly to be erected deck is not going to extend any further out from the house towards the property line. It will either follow the line of the house or be inside that line, correct?
No. It's just going further back.
Yes, just further back, but it will follow the line of the house.
Yes.
Okay. Excuse me, that's the only question I had, Christine?
No questions.
No questions.
Art, Phyllis?
No questions.
Is there anybody in the audience or on our Zoom audience that would like to speak to this application? Hearing none, can I have a motion to close this public hearing?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Art, your gentleman, you gave Christine the chance.
I did. I know she was chomping on the-
Thank you, thank you very much.
What a guy, yeah.
You can either stay and wait for our deliberations or you can check in with the town hall tomorrow morning.
Okay, what, do they mail out the permit later?
No.
Building permit?
They'll notify you or you can call in and we'll, and you can be notified that way.
Okay.
All righty. Okay, that actually brings us to the end of our agenda because item number ten has been adjourned to our November ninth meeting. Is there anybody here that feels we need a break before continuing with our deliberations?
I thought this was tough so far.
How about that?
No.
Okay, just to remind everybody, this is deliberation portion of our meeting, we'll move right into it. At this point, it's, this is just the, the board deliberating on each individual application and rendering a decision, okay? So no further input from the audience or the spectators at this point. All righty, so let's get right on to it. We're gonna go to Mr. Charles Vedder at 26 Thomas Avenue to permit the construction of a two-car, or two, yeah, two-car garage within two feet of the property line. Any additional discussion on Mr. Vedder's application?
Only the, excuse me, only the two points that we brought up earlier that-
Stipulations.
Stayed on his property.
Mm-hmm.
And I'd like to see him move it the extra foot if we could.
Okay.
He offered to do it, so give the neighbor a little breathing room. That's all.
Okay. The provisions, should they be offered? Lisa, should the provisions be offered now or at the end of the findings?
You can do them now so that if the board has any discussion about any of the findings, they can comment on them?
Okay, so, as we move forward with this application, there are two provisions which we've been requested to ask of the applicant. One was? Yes?
So those, so what the board will actually be granting then is a variance to allow, a seven-foot variance rather than an eight-foot variance?
Eight foot, yes.
So that's actually part of the motion and then the condition that the water, the drainage be kept entirely on the applicant's property is, becomes a condition and that goes at the end. So.
Okay, so then-
Findings first and then the motion for the variance with the condition.
Findings first. Change in the variance and then the conditions. Okay. There we go. Okay, so for the findings, for an area variance provided in item number four, Charles Vedder at 26 Thomas Avenue, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by granting this area variance. The, an undesirable change, it's finding that the, an undesirable change will not be produced. There's very little room for this type of structure to be placed. The applicant will be, we will, does the seven-foot get mentioned? I'm sorry, does the three-foot and the seven-foot get mentioned here?
You can mention them as part of the findings, that's certainly fine. So when you're talking about the character of the neighborhood, what you talk about is the fact that other properties in the area have two-car garages. It's consistent with the residential character of the neighborhood, et cetera. The two-foot versus three-foot comes either in the whether the variance is substantial analysis or in the overall balancing test that the board takes into account.
Very good.
Which is the detriment to the town if the variance was granted versus the benefit to the applicant of granting it.
I couldn't have said it better myself.
Yours is practice.
Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance. Don't feel that this application could be satisfied without the issuance of an area variance. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, yes, it is substantial, being only three feet from, I'm ending that to be three feet from the property line. But because of the, the size of the lot and the position of the garage, there's no other, well, it is substantial because of the size of the garage and its location on the property. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district. No, it will not, it's in keeping with many other similar garages in the area. As far as the environmental impact, we'll be addressing the runoff issue as requested by the applicant's neighbor's attorney at the end of the findings. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, yes, it is self-created, but there was probably no other way to achieve the desired result. And a condition, in addition, in addition to asking the applicant to move the garage an additional foot as he had volunteered in to create a three-foot setback from the property line requiring only a seven-foot variance, the applicant has been asked to and agreed to properly create drainage for runoff of the rainwater so that it does not adversely affect his neighbor to, to the side, which I believe is 24 Thomas Avenue. Okay. Christine, would you like to make this motion?
Sure. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number four. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair. And the approval of this variance is subject to the, the condition that the water drainage be on the applicant's property and that it is a seven-foot variance instead of an eight-foot variance.
Second.
Seconded by Art, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries for zero. Thank you, Mr. Vedder. Okay. Mr. Vanjura at 35 Hasbrook Drive, okay.
You can call the zoning department tomorrow morning.
Okay, so this is to create a larger shed, excuse me, which will, to replace an existing shed with a larger shed.
Mr. Chairman? Interrupted for just a second.
Sure, I'm sorry.
We still have two people here?
Or do we have people on video or still?
Mr. Vanjura was here on, on the video, I'm sorry, I apologize. To the O'Connors, yes, so since they are here, I'm sorry, Lynch's, since they are here, why don't we ask, why don't we address the Lynch's application at Eileen Boulevard? Okay. Any discussion on this application?
No.
Phyllis?
No, I, I think, you know, every, I think that the family acted in good faith, they built a fence, doesn't impact visibility. I, I, you know, I think it just needs to be cleaned up, that's all.
Okay, very good. All right, so moving ahead then on item number six, I like to present these as findings. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created by granting the area variance. I, I don't believe we, the fence, as Phyllis said, the applicant's acted in good faith. The fence is, has been erected, it is, it is in keeping with the neighborhood because of it being two-side yard, two-side yards, it does not present any line of sight obstructions, so it does not produce an undesirable change. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue. At this point, it seems that the applicant took the necessary steps to pursue the fence in compliance with all the regulations and followed through with approved plans. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, yes, it is substantial, but again, the applicant seemed to be acting in good faith at the guidance of information that they had received from the town. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environment, conditions in the neighborhood or district, I, I don't believe that would be the case. Board has visited and the fence was, is tasteful and it seems to be in keeping with the environment. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, in, in the sense that yes, but again, going back to the same point, the applicant seemed to do their due diligence and acted in good faith and should not be penalized for that. I represent those as the findings. Art? If you'd like to make the motion?
Certainly. Okay, we're on number six, right?
We are on number six.
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number six. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts as finding those set forth by the chair and there are no stipulations on this. So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes for zero. All righty. And thank you to the Lynch's. Okay, so going back now, I would imagine to, is there, let's see, we have, we have Mr. O'Connor is here?
Mr. O'Connor is on the line.
Okay, very good, we'll go on to the O'Connors then. Because I don't see Mr. Baldwin there any longer? Nope, okay. So we'll go on to item number eight. And just give me a second to bring that one up. Okay. Any discussion?
No.
There's no other place to put it.
And I think it's, I think it's gonna make, I think it's gonna make Mr. O'Connor a very happy, organized man with what he has proposed. Phyllis, any discussion?
I think he's looking to improve the property overall and he's done a lot of work and put a lot of thought into where to put the shed. Other, other properties in the area have similar sheds. I think it just is, you know, as Art said, there's no other place to put it.
All righty. Let's move right along then. So whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue, it does not seem that the, that there would be any other remedy, that this one would be the most direct to address the situation. And the structure that Mr. O'Connor is looking to put in place is going to be a lot more desirable than the existing structure and also be able to encompass other situations of storage. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, yes, it, it is substantial, but because of the location of the size of the lot and the size of- because of the location of the size of the lot, uh, and the size of the, the shed, uh, he's, uh, there's really no other place to put it, uh, I'd like to note that he's not moving any closer to, uh, the rear property line than the existing shed is now, so, um, the footprint that he'll be taking up is pretty much the same footprint, but a larger one, but not extending further towards the rear property line. Uh, whether the proposed area variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environment conditions in the neighborhood or district, uh, it, uh, well, it will have an effect, but it's, uh, gonna be to, uh, feel the benefit of the neighborhood and, uh, the property itself. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, um, self-created in the sense that only, this is really the only feasible place for, uh, the shed to be located and still, uh, maintain, uh, a backyard for, uh, Mr. O'Connor. So the findings, Phyllis, would you, uh, like to make a motion?
Certainly. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number eight, right, no? Sorry, yes, eight.
Yes, eight.
Uh, the decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, the results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the finding as set forth by the chair, um, and there are no amendments to it.
Okay, so moved, uh, we have second?
No, sorry.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the motion passes for zero.
Aye.
Pardon me?
Aye, she said.
Oh, aye. Alrighty, um, so we should probably go back to item number five now, um, Philly Van Jura, uh, eight, uh, 35 Hasbrook Drive. Um, any discussion on this application?
No, straightforward.
Art, anything?
No.
Phyllis?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
No.
All right, so, uh, whether the benefit thought, sought by the, I move these as a findings, uh, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method, um, it, the only, uh, other method that, uh, would make, uh, this able to be achieved would be to move the, uh, shed, uh, much further into the yard, thereby losing yard space, uh, Mr. Van Jura is not going to be infringing on either the, there is an existing shed there, and he will be, not be, um, uh, the new shed will not be any closer to the side or back, uh, lines than the, the existing shed is, all the, the larger measurements will be moved, uh, in towards his property, so this, uh, this is, uh, the best benefit of, that the applicant can see. And whether the requested area variance is substantial, substantial in the sense of the amount of feet being granted, but not substantial because there is an existing, uh, shed, uh, within those boundaries, uh, presently. And, uh, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environment in the neighborhood, uh, I don't feel that will be the case, in fact, uh, it would probably help, uh, again, as in, uh, the previous application, probably help to improve the look of the neighborhood and the general overall posture. And whether the alleged, uh, difficulty was self-created, um, self-created only in the fact that, uh, Mr. Van Jura doesn't want to place the new shed right off his, uh, immediate backyard and lose all of his backyard, so, uh, there really is no other remedy for the applicant. Those being the findings, uh, shall we start around the board again?
Sure.
Christine?
Okay.
Make a motion?
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number five. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair.
Second. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes for zero. Okay, zipping right along here, item number seven, uh, Kenneth Fuld with Jeremy King at 42 Brentwood Drive. And, uh, the, again, this applicant is seeking to install a fence six feet in height, uh, not seven, um, requiring a, um, a variance of three and a half feet, uh, for everybody that visited the, uh, property, uh, again, this being two-side yards, uh, the, I think the, the key factor here is, uh, the very, very unusual topography of the, uh, the land, um, as provided in the, um, uh, the drawings, and, uh, you know, if, uh, you're able to walk the property, the, the fence is going to be, um, uh, on the side yard, which is also a second front yard, but it's gonna be well, well below the, um, uh, the level of the house, okay, so it's actually, the property actually falls off very dramatically, and it's going to, uh, be far enough away from the corner that it's really not going to be in, uh, inflicting, uh, or affecting any kind of line of sight at that corner. So, uh, it's a very-
The variance in this case, then, is 2.5 feet, right? Not 3.5, because they are-
Yes, it will be two, 2.5, no.
Because it's a six-foot tall fence?
Two-point, I'm sorry, 2.5 feet will be the variance, right? Because the fence size is reduced to six. Okay, so, whether an undesirable change, these are the findings, uh, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, uh, no, uh, I don't believe an undesirable change, uh, will be produced, in fact, uh, this probably will enhance, uh, the, uh, character of the property and the overall character of the neighborhood, um, kinda freshened it up a bit there, very unusual, uh, corner. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method, uh, feasible to the applicant to pursue, uh, given the, as I said before, given the topography of the property and the slopes, the great slopes, um, this, uh, prob, there probably is no other way to, uh, achieve the desired result. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, uh, it really is not substantial, we're looking at a two-and-a-half-foot area variance, uh, height variance, and not substantial because we've done this, uh, on numerous occasions, uh, where there's a situation with two-side yards, and where the, uh, fence will start on, um, the, uh, the adjoining road is far enough off the corner that there should, and back far enough from the road that there should be, uh, no, uh, problems with line of sight, uh, creating any kind of issues for safety. And whether the proposed variance, uh, oh, sorry, just did that one, um, whether the, well, I'm sorry, I didn't, I kinda combined, the whether the proposed area variance will have an adverse effect, uh, no, will not, it will probably have an improvement. And whether the, um, alleged difficulty was self-created, uh, self-created only in the sense that, uh, they're choosing to, uh, you know, request the variance, but, uh, the, this, uh, given the, uh, the property, uh, there's really no other option for them to, uh, go. Okay. Art, would you like to make that motion?
Sure. I'm on number-
I'm sorry, we are on number seven.
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number seven. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the, uh, public hearing, and results of site visits, visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings set forth by the chair with no No conditions. Conditions placed on it.
Nope.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 That motion carries also for zero. Okay. That and cleanup here, we're on the slope at 19 Oriole Drive. This, uh, is for, uh, this, uh, is for a variance of, of 6.6 feet, uh, for a deck to be, uh, constructed, uh, 13.4 feet from the side property lot line, uh, as, um, we saw and as, uh, Miss Slope, um, stated, the deck is going to be constructed, it's gonna be a, uh, an enlarged deck, but that's, uh, the enlargement's gonna be strictly in the back of the house and, uh, to the side, it's not, it's gonna follow the prop, uh, the, um, sightline of the house, it's not going to be moving any closer to the existing property line than the house is currently, which is the 13.4 feet. So, uh, with all of that in compliance, so no other comments or discussions? Okey-dokey. So, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, uh, no, we do not feel that an undesirable change will be, um, produced in the character of the neighborhood, in fact, it'll help to improve the, uh, backyard living conditions for the slopes. Uh, whether the benefits sought by the applicant could be achieved by some other method, uh, no, not really, this, uh, would be, uh, again, replacing, uh, uh, a former deck that was there, and again, this will be following the same, uh, sightline of the house, not moving any closer to the side lot line. And whether the requested area variance is substantial, substantial, uh, only in the sense of it being 6.6 feet, but again, the, the house is that distance, uh, from the, uh, property, uh, isn't, the deck is not going any closer than the, uh, house is to the existing property line. And whether the, uh, proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environment conditions in the neighborhood, no, it will not. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, uh, probably only self-created in the sense that, uh, Miss Slope wanted to get rid of, uh, an unsafe deck and replace it with a, uh, a much sturdier, uh, more usable one, and, um, I find, I offer those as the findings. Phyllis, would you like to make the motion? Hello?
I'm sorry, you need me to do, um-
This would be on-
You were, you were freezing, and, and the whole vocal piece was distorted, but-
Oh, okay. Would you like to make the motion on number nine, please?
Yes, not a problem. I move that the board approve, uh, variance in number nine, uh, this decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearings, and the results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair, so move.
Second. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 That motion passes four to zero. So that brings us to the end of our agenda. I don't think we have any other business, uh, to deal with, do we, Lisa? Nope. I wanna thank everybody for their support this evening. I didn't have any Ralph Crampton moments, I didn't think, at least, no humma, na, humma, humnas?
We wouldn't, we wouldn't tell you anymore.
So, um, okay, uh, I'd like to make, uh, so I'd like to make a motion to adjourn, uh, this evening's meeting.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. See you next month, thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Stay home.
Great job, Tony.
Bye, Phyllis.
Yeah, thank you.
Bye.
Bye.